I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, February 3rd, 2014. Want to welcome everyone. Tonight is Maurice Blunt. I can't see for the... John Hurst is here. John Hurst, good friend and pastor of Mount Zion Baptist Church, is going to give our invocation. Is that right, John?
Yes, sir.
And then he'll lead us in the pledge of the flag. Would everyone please rise?
Oh, God in heaven, we come to thee this evening with bowed heads and humble hearts, thanking you for blessing us to be here, the blessing that you've given us throughout the year. You blessed us to see the beginning of a new year. And we thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who came though we might have life and have that more, but not then as we come tonight. We thank you for this organization, this council. Pray for them that they will always make right decisions to the best of their ability. I pray that you would just continue leading God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of America and to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is agenda changes, and we don't really have enough to... on the agenda to have any changes. We have, under the mayor's report, I know we got a proclamation for Black History Month, and we got a great performance by some folks over here last year. They're going to come and just second... I just want to just take a quick moment just to not only thank the citizens of Smyrna, but thank our staff, our public safety, our public works, all of our employees who just did an unbelievable job this last Tuesday and Wednesday. And to the citizens and businesses of Smyrna who've just stepped up to the plate and did a lot of things that really didn't amaze me, but there's a lot of good things for people in our community that were either stuck, had no place to go, and we just... A lot of problems in the metro area, but Smyrna, I think, did a great job, and we're going to improve on that, so. We got one... Well, I'm going to... Let's do the proclamation first, and then I'm going to introduce Ann Harris, who's a candidate for Superior Court Judge. There's a proclamation for Black History Month, and I believe that Andrea Bluestein is going to read that. Is there anyone here specifically to accept the proclamation?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Betty Williams from Ward Three and her daughter, Lisa Castleberry from Ward Two, to please come up at this time to accept the proclamation after I read it. Okay. "A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Black History Month. Whereas each year during Black History Month, the city of Smyrna explores the history and culture of African-Americans, discovers the treasure of stories about the triumph of the human spirit, and supports special programs and displays. And whereas this year, 2014, marks the 50th anniversary for both the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the Nobel Peace Prize to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1964 prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin in public facilities, employment, and voter registration. And whereas on July 2nd, 1964, President Lyndon Johnson signed the bill into law, ending Jim Crow practices and paving the way for future anti-discrimination legislation, including the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And whereas on October 14th, 1964, at the age of 35, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. learned he was the youngest man to receive the Nobel Peace Prize. And whereas on December 10th, 1964, Dr. King accepted the award with an abiding faith in America and an audacious faith in the future of mankind. And whereas tomorrow, February 4th, 2014, would be the 101st birthday of Rosa Parks, the only American woman to lie in state in the U.S. Capitol Rotunda. And whereas the Black History Month theme for 2014 is Civil Rights in America, to celebrate the golden jubilee of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the many leaders of this movement. And whereas Black History Month is not only important to African-Americans, but is an essential part of American history, it is fitting that we set aside a special time to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans to our American culture now. Therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2014 to be Black History Month. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the cities of Smyrna to be affixed upon this the third day of February in the year of our Lord 2014."
Thank y'all very much.
Thanks.
And the spiritual heirs are here. They were here last year. Is that correct? Y'all all look the same. Y'all can come forward. They're going to perform. Don't be bashful. I want to know where that... Did y'all bring the little guy with you? Where? I don't see him. Y'all can use that microphone. Y'all can use that one, or you may not even need it. You want to tell us a little bit about you guys, about yourselves?
We performed this group some 50 years ago. We have made too many changes in it. We have lost some, some have stayed with us. But I formed this group myself 50-some years ago, and I'm the oldest member in it and the original member of the group. A lot of people may know my family from around here. I know... Now I know my brother Corky. And we love the glory because we're all deacons at the church, Mount Zion Baptist Church in Smyrna. And we working for the Lord, but we serving God the way we enjoy ourselves. We also serve Him in our church, too. We are family, and we work for God. And we like to do what we doing. And we ask that y'all keep us in your prayers and pray for us that we continue on in doing what we doing in the name of the Lord. If the good Lord have us for 50 more years, we're going to be here. So y'all keep us in your prayers.
Come along, my friend, come along. Let's ride this train, nothing on this train to lose everything to gain. Come along, my friend, come along. Let's ride this train, nothing on this train to lose everything to gain. Gospel train is coming, it's coming. Jesus said he was coming, but he didn't say when. You, 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 you ought to get your house in order. Jesus is coming again. There's nothing on this train to lose everything to gain. Come along, my friend, come along. My friend, come along. Let's ride this train, nothing on this train to lose everything to gain. Come along, my friend, come along. Let's ride this train, nothing on this train to lose everything to gain. Gospel train is coming, it's coming round again. Jesus said he was coming, but he didn't say when. You, you, you ought to get your house in order. Jesus is coming again. There's nothing on this train to lose everything to gain. Come along, my friend, come along. Let's ride this train, nothing on this train to lose everything to gain.
Guide me, guide me. He's got all the way. He's going to guide me all the way.
All the way. All the way. All the way, yeah. I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. All the way. All the way, yeah. All the way. I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. Bye, bye, yeah. Bye, bye. Oh, I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. All the way. Bye, bye, yeah. Bye, bye. I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. Listen here. Well, I was lost in sin, but then Jesus, He took me on in. He shined a light from heaven on my soul. Yes, He did. Well, He filled my heart with love. Fear of my name above. I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. All the way. All the way. All the way, yeah. I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. All the way. All the way. All the way, yeah. I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. Listen here. Well, I was lost in sin, but then Jesus, He took me on in. He shined a light from heaven on my soul. Yes, He did. Well, He filled my heart with love. Fear of my name above. I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. All the way. I'm gonna walk. I'm gonna talk. I'm gonna tell him I made it up. Sometimes stumbling, sometimes falling, sometimes may see my way clear. For I made it, the reason why I made it. I got my hands in the master's net. Don't let nothing turn me around. Don't let nothing turn me around. I'm gonna walk. I'm gonna talk. I'm gonna tell him I made it up. Sometimes stumbling, sometimes falling, sometimes may see my way clear. For I made it, the reason why I made it. I got my hands in the master's net. Don't let nothing turn me around. Don't let nothing turn me around. Listen. I'm gonna walk and talk with Jesus all the way. All the way.
I think they got better since last year. Good folks. Thank y'all so much. We have a candidate that's running for Superior Court. Ann Harris is here, and you'll come up and say something real brief.
Thank you, sir.
It'd be tough to follow these guys right here, though.
I was about to say, I've had tough acts to follow, but I think spiritual heirs take it to a new level. I am Ann Harris. I'm a senior assistant district attorney here in the Cobb District Attorney's Office, and I have been a prosecutor in Cobb Superior Court for 19 years. As many of you know, Judge Botterford is retiring at the end of this year, and it will be an open seat. It's a nonpartisan race, and it's on the ballot in May. It's not on the general election ballot in November, but it's on the ballot in May, and it is a county-wide race. Surprisingly, Smyrna has not had a judge in Cobb Superior Court for several years. My husband Jim and I live in Smyrna, just down the road off of Ridge Road. We've lived here for 20-plus years. I got my undergraduate degree at Auburn. I got my law degree at Vanderbilt. And since getting my law degree, I have devoted my career to public service. For 19 years, I have followed every day in my job, my sworn duty, which is to seek justice. And seeking justice means working tirelessly to protect our families and our neighborhoods. I've prosecuted murderers, rapists, armed robbers, drug traffickers. I've prosecuted those who abuse our children and those who abuse our elders, those who have broken into our homes and those who have stolen our possessions, our security, and our identities. Most recently, I prosecuted a double homicide. I was the last person here in Cobb County to have the jury return a... the most serious penalty you can in a criminal case, the death penalty, for a violent double homicide committed by a man with a violent past. But seeking justice is not just about being tough on crime. It's about being wise enough to know that there are situations and there are people who are deserving of compassion in our criminal justice system. It also... So it means treating with the nonviolent offenders with alternatives to incarceration. Seeking justice also means serving our citizens with integrity in seeking to be fair every day in all the people that you deal with. It means respecting the rights of everyone, the accused and the victims. Being tough, being wise, being fair. After 19 years prosecuting in Superior Court, these are the values and the experience I will take to the bench. These are values I believe you share, and this is experience I believe you can trust. I'm Ann Harris, and I humbly ask for your support and on May 20th this spring for your vote. Thank you so much.
Okay. We'll get into the regular portion of the agenda, and that's... Item four is land issues, zoning, and annexation. We don't have anything under that topic. Item five is previous license. We have nothing. Item six is former business. A is 2014-20021, approval and modifications to defined benefit plan regarding retirement benefits for elected official. Mr. Eric Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, when the 2010 defined benefit hybrid plan was implemented across the city for employees and elected officials, excluded any official who was elected on or after April 1st, 2010. So for consistent inequality between elected officials, it is recommended to modify the plans to include current and future elected officials into the 1999 plan, which is the retirement plan that was into effect between July 1st, 1999, and April 1st, 2010. We do recommend approval.
Mr. Wade Lenika chairs HR Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Taylor has explained it. This will be a plan where the members will contribute towards their retirement. I think it's a matter of equity. Therefore, I'm going to move approval of item 2014-021, modification of the defined benefit plan regarding retirement benefit for elected officials.
Have a motion, second. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that's been mentioned is equity, but there actually isn't equity to begin with. You know, there are council members who were on the council prior to 1999 or on a different plan from council members who came on after 1999. So I don't know if it's necessarily across the board equity, and I just wanted to point that out because I think that that is something that needs to be noted in this discussion.
Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 6 to 1, with Ms. Annette Wits voting in the negative. Okay. Item seven, commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight's consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for councils approved?
We have a short consent agenda this evening with only three items. Item one is the approval of the January 21st, 2014 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is to award RFP 14-018 for pedestrian bridge rehabilitation at Argyle Elementary to the lowest bidder. That's Engineered Restorations Incorporated for $80,425. And authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And the final item is to award RFP 14-009 for landscape maintenance to the lowest bidder, Ashford Gardeners Incorporated, for $698,400, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Do you motion that we approve the consent agenda? Motion, second. Any further discussion? I'll lose in favor of the motion. Please vote. That's approved, 7 to 0. Committee reports will start tonight with... with Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. I, too, want to express my appreciation to all the team in Smyrna that worked so hard during our snowstorm. Also, we're getting ready to start the visioning process. We have a meeting scheduled for Friday morning to get us started and give us some instructions on what we need to do next and how we need to get people involved. So at our next council meeting, we will definitely have a report to update you and tell you where you can find some information. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to want to express an extreme appreciation to all of the city staff and employees who worked so very hard during Tuesday's debacle. It was quite interesting to be out on Spring Road. I met a lot of people because nobody could get up our driveway, so we were... I rounded up some people, and we were out there digging the hill out and throwing out ice melt. There were some real interesting characters who I met along the way who had abandoned their cars and having to walk for miles. But, you know, they had a pretty... had a good attitude about it, and I was sorry that we didn't have any hot chocolate or anything to give them, but they trudged on anyway. But hopefully, we all learned something, and next time it will... I think we came out okay, but I hope the city does a little bit... the city of Atlanta does a little bit better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Karen Annette Witsch.
Thanks. I'd like to thank Ms. Betty Williams and Ms. Lisa Castleberry for coming down here tonight to receive the proclamation in person. They are real assets to the community. They both work very, very hard. Betty has for decades, and Lisa is truly following in her mother's footsteps. They're unbelievable, and I'm so grateful they came. I also wanted to thank the spiritual heirs. They are a treasure. They are... they truly are one of Smyrna's hometown treasures, and it is such a gift to be able to hear them saying, "Thank you so much for coming down here tonight." I also want to thank everyone who came together and pulled us through the recent unpleasantness that we experienced last week. There... I especially wanted to point out and thank everyone, all the Smyrna residents, who came together to help their neighbors and visitors and to help our guests. We truly showed hospitality to the folks who, because of the circumstances, had to stay with us in the community center, had to stay with us in our fire stations, and people came together. You know, we got the word from the fire chief for what the needs were. We spread the word out to the community for what the needs were, and overwhelmingly, the neighbors came together to bring food, snacks, hygiene items, blankets, pillows, anything these folks needed to make their stay in Smyrna as pleasant as it could be under the circumstances. I especially wanted to thank some Ward Three communities that came together. There are parts of Ward Three that are in Smyrna Heights, and the Williams Park neighbors went above and beyond in terms of getting things to the community center, to the fire stations, and it was... our gratitude is incredible. And finally, I'm very excited to begin the vision process. I've already heard from some folks in the Ward Three community who are eager to participate, and I think that the enthusiasm that we're already seeing bodes very well for the process. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welsh.
And let's let our staff know how much we appreciate everything that they did this past week. I went into the community center early Wednesday morning, and we had people that worked for the city that had been there all night, and that speaks well of our people. They hadn't slept. They were taking care of the people, most of which were not Smyrna citizens. But they were working for the city, and they were definitely diplomats for the city of Smyrna, and they all deserve a pat on the back. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
I also want to echo the thanks to the staff and everyone that was involved, and also the community that donated so many items. I went to the community center on Wednesday afternoon, and I was overwhelmed with everything that had been donated. So that was really cool to see how the community got involved. And also, because of the weather, the Downton Tea at the library had to be canceled, and it's been rescheduled for this Friday, February 7th, from 2:00 to 3:30, and that's at the library. And then also, on Saturday, there's a movie matinee on February 15th from 2:00 to 4:00, and that movie... the movie is The Disney Movie of Ruby Bridges. And this is a true story of Ruby Bridges, an African-American girl who, in 1960, at age six, helped to integrate the all-white schools of New Orleans. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Wade Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, too, want to recognize and thank the staff and all the citizens of Smyrna who did so much to help out folks during the snowstorm last week. I think there's a million stories all across the metro area, and I heard nowhere near a million, but I heard a lot of stories about businesses opening up their doors to let people in to get them out of their cars that first night so they could at least sleep inside and have access to restrooms and water and things like that. Restaurants that opened up and donated... Susan, you experienced some of this, coffee and soup and food and their restrooms and things for stranded travelers. You know, the list of just the stores in Smyrna and the businesses in Smyrna that did that is too long for us to even try to name them all. I would just say thank you to each one of those business owners and managers who did the right thing and helped out a neighbor in need, and that's what community is all about. Yeah, things were rough. Yeah, things were tough, but people really... I was proud of the way people responded, not just in Smyrna, but all over metro Atlanta. That was really inspiring to me. I also want to thank the spiritual heirs. I first heard them singing a number of years ago at an MLK celebration up in Marietta. Later attended their 50th anniversary singing down in Mableton. They are, as Councilwoman Annette Witsch said, a Smyrna treasure. I couldn't be more proud of them. What a great group of people, what great role models for their community and for young people, people who love the city and love their community and love God. And I have only very positive things to say, and the fact that they've been here now several years in a row to sing for us... years in a row to sing for us and our community is a blessing, and I salute you, gentlemen, and thank you for that. Smyrna's a remarkable community, and yesterday, through the library, we had Dr. Christina Ferris, Dr. Christina King Ferris speak on the first Sunday lecture put on by Mary Moore and the library and the Friends of the Library. The crowd was large enough that they had to move it to the community center. I know I heard from a lot of people and talked with a lot of people. For us, this was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, maybe to visit with, to speak directly, to shake hands with, get pictures taken, whatever, with, you know, the sister of Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. She gave an eloquent speech, very well attended. I was so proud that Smyrna had her. I was just blown away. It was remarkable. Finally, I want to thank Congressman David Scott for hosting his Military Academy nominations and award session in Smyrna, which he did on Saturday at Bronner Hall, where he presented the nominations to the military academies, to 13th District students, including several from Campbell and Whitfield Academy, Cobb County Schools, as well as the other counties in his district. To have him come to Smyrna to do that is a great honor, and again, it was a blessing for us to have him and those families choose to come here to do that. And, Your Honor, I hope we can do that again. I appreciated the mayor and Councilwoman Wilkinson and Councilman Fennell being present, and a number of our staff that helped us set it up. It was wonderful. Finally, I look forward to meeting with the Forest Hills neighborhood this Sunday, and with that, I yield.
Mr. Rod Fennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to also echo, it being Black History Month, we had an opportunity yesterday in Smyrna to welcome Dr. King's sister, who lives close by, but it just reminds us that Black history in America, a lot of it was written right here in the metro region. It continues to be written. At Congressman Scott's event on Saturday, it was even more of a reminder when I had the privilege of sitting next to Dr. C.T. Vivian, who is one of the original founding leaders of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, who walked many of those same miles with Dr. King back in the day. And these people are still amongst us and still able to communicate the message of why it is really important for us as a country to embrace opportunities, to encourage, as that military celebration showed, an awful lot of these young people for the opportunity they have now to serve their country. And I was grateful to be a part of that and to be grateful to have such an active African-American population in Smyrna who is contributing to the greater community as a whole, too. Mr. Mayor, I did want to thank the Vinings Estates Homeowners Association for allowing me to present a report at their annual meeting, and I want to thank the Smyrna Police Department for giving their update during that annual meeting as well on a couple of items important to the community. We'll have meetings coming up soon with Woodland Walk, dealing with an issue that's important to them, and in the North Cooper Lake area where a new development is going out by the park. There is a meeting that we're trying to schedule to allow for the neighbors to hear the details of those 12 homes that are being proposed for that area. We hope to do that before this council gets a chance to take a look at it. I do also want to remind you, if you have an interest to hear more about the Atlanta Braves coming to Smyrna nearby, this Thursday, the Smyrna Business Association program is Mike Plant, the Executive Vice President of the Atlanta Braves. You can go to smyrnabusiness.org to get your tickets, but it's the community center. It is likely to be a sellout, so please, if you want to make it and hear directly from the man who engineered the deal to bring the Atlanta Braves to Cobb County in Smyrna, Mike Plant will be there. We look forward to having you a part of that. This is going to be a great business partner and a neighbor for Smyrna for a long time to come, and we're proud to welcome him in the community. And then finally, I want to echo my colleagues' sentiments and the mayor's about how exemplary I think our city employees performed during this recent episode that we all endured. I spent 6 hours and 10 minutes in the car. One of my colleagues spent overnight in her car elsewhere. I know another one had a similar experience elsewhere. But as a community, we had a lot of people pull together, our employees, our public safety personnel, as always, 24/7, 365, we're on the spot, making sure to look after people. But we had the longest-serving department head at Public Works putting his team in the field and responding to the needs, and then the newest department head with our fire chief, and then about to celebrate his one-year anniversary, our police chief. So those three department heads alone, plus the Parks and Rec team that opened up the community center, all together made a great team effort, I think, collectively, a better response than almost any other community in the metro region, in my opinion. I may be biased, but it was by observation of many other people as well. I'm proud of what the community as a whole, the citizens, who stepped forward, who volunteered their help, who stepped out on the roadways, whether it was shoveling a driveway or bringing supplies to the community center. I was proud to be a Smyrnan last week, and I continue to be proud of the people who call Smyrna home and who work with the city. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Eric Taylor, anything?
Scott Cochran. Ms. Graham. We do not have a show call hearing. We've got two folks signed up for citizens input. Bill Mathis, 1599 Roswell Street. I think it says water plus money. Yeah.
It's like Groundhog Day, you know?
Groundhog Day.
You know, you've seen the movie where you keep going on and on and on. Same deal here, you know? I'm getting everybody's water from the new houses they built up on the street from, me four of them. They put a parking lot in the back. What are they going to do with the water? Run it down the street. Let me take care of it. None of this water is mine. And we talked about cooperation. Scott Stokes sends Croy Engineering out, and he asked if I can cut some hedges so they can do their surveying. Well, I told them not to cut, clear cut, where you can see, so they put their instrument out on the street, and they decided they're going to put it up underneath my magnolia tree, clear cut from there where I have a hammock, where you look straight across the street, right where I told them. They cut this high. Anybody knows anything about surveying? You don't have to move your instrument around. You do triangulation. And they came out and asked them why they did that. Said, "We're just going by what we're told to do." I don't know what to do. Does anybody have a suggestion?
No, I'd love to talk with you after this. This is the first that this has come to my attention, so I'd definitely like to talk to you more afterwards, if that's all right with you.
I mean, I've been dealing with Smyrna badly for a lot of years. I moved here in 1965, and in '73, I decided that I would hook on to the city sewer. Got tired of dealing with a septic tank. When I had the septic tank, it would just run up, and the toilet wouldn't flow. When I hooked on to the sewer, less than a month, it fills my basement up with raw sewer. Now, I dealt with that for 20 years until he finally fixed the main sewer line. Is that a to-go order or what?
15 seconds. You've got 15.
15 seconds. I don't believe I can finish it all in 15 seconds.
Okay, well, you got 10 there. Now, go ahead. You go ahead and finish.
And then they put the catch basin in front, and it's not the capacity, so it floods my front yard. Had a nice fig tree that I just loved, and it just doesn't like wet feet. It died, so I put in bamboo. Bamboo likes it. But I don't know what I'm going to do in the backyard. I guess crawdad pond.
Bill, why don't we do this? Terry said she's wanting to meet with, there's some folks here tonight from Croy. This meeting will be able to...
Well, they came out and did mischief, is exactly what they did.
Did what?
Mischief.
Oh, I don't know, but I mean, they're here tonight.
Sure they did.
I think Terry will be glad to...
Where are they at?
Boy, they're right back there. That's what I'm saying, after the meeting, after this meeting, they'll be glad to meet with Terry.
Okay. I'm at the Wits Inn.
Okay.
You know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alec Bakri, 3459 Chalney Trail, comments.
My first comment tonight is this now increase of 4% more in the water bill. That makes 24 and 1/2% in a little over a year. I've asked anyone on this council to please, with a million and a half profit in 12 from the Water Department back to the general fund, why you haven't used any of this to absorb some of these increases. The Water Department should be a service department, not a profit-making department. Secondly, February 1st on Hickory Lakes, $898,000 in profit, I mean, excuse me, on the interest on that property was due, and August 1st of this year, another $473,000 is due in six months. That puts it at 2.3 million interest that we have to pay on Hickory Lakes. I'd like in the future for someone to tell me how we're going to be able to get our money back on that. Thirdly, I've always believed these council people represent the best interest of their wards, not their own interest. To see the emotional speeches against Johnquill Plaza and those apartments in there, that vote should have been seven to nothing. I've never seen so many people against something like that. And even the council person in Ward 3 voted against her own constituents, and that's not right. You represent your people, and it clearly stated how many were against it. The fourth issue is this vision. Instead of having a committee, why don't you have a town hall meeting and bring in more people? We all have visions, but what you get or what you want to get and what you don't get are two different scenarios. Now, if you talk, there's a lot of pretty good advice out there. You could talk to the people that put Hiram on the map downtown, Vinings, Woodstock, and see what they've done to entice people to open their businesses in their areas. And I applaud the people that voted against spending $140,000 on that. And one article in the paper, I find it interesting at the end, some of the council had voted against the wishes of Johnquill Plaza, said, "Help the city stay close to the wishes of the residents." Well, they sure didn't stay close to the wishes of the residents when they voted to get the apartments sent over at Johnquill. I find this extremely hypocritical. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers. I do want to recognize the boy scout in the back. I guess he's working on his citizenship award. You want to come say something?
Uh, communication.
Well, you want to come and say something to us? Tell us who you are, and this would be a great time. You can look back on this. What's your name?
Judge.
And where you live at?
Um, here in Smyrna.
That's a good answer.
[laughing].
Is that your brother back there with you?
My dad.
[laughing]. So what troop are you from?
Uh, Troop 22.
Oh, good deal. So you had to come do this for communication?
Yeah.
Did you enjoy it, or you just, was it better than the Super Bowl?
[laughing] No. Super Bowl.
[laughing]. Well, good deal. We just wanted to, we thank you for coming. Come back anytime you want to.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Anybody else out there getting any kind of badges or anything or being punished for having, thank you so much for coming. If there's no other business to be brought for this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at 18:00. You going to meet with...